All right, so. We made it a few verses in last time, you know, we making our way through 14. I think we concluded last week with 13 and I want to read this section again nine through 13. Just so that we are going to because we're going to circle back around and touch on a few of the themes. Okay, and I am going to do my very best to be as clear as possible. You know, you're in trouble if I need to lay that out from the beginning. Because we are going to be, well, maybe quite possibly at the very end here, but. But the thing is when we're bouncing from one language to another, when we're talking about different perceptions or really culturally what we've inherited theologically. From and something that's been influenced over the centuries and shaped our perspective. And so I really do want to sort through some of this, we're going to be going all over the all over the Bible, because you know, it's just, it's hearing it from God's word first and foremost. Okay, so. Let's jump into this. Then another angel, a third one followed them saying with a loud voice. If anyone worships the beast in his image and receives a mark on his forehead or on his hand, he also will drink of the wine of the wrath of God, which is mixed in full strength in the cup of his anger, and he will be tormented with fire and brimstone in the presence of the holy angels and in the presence of the lamb. And the smoke of their torment goes up forever and ever. They have no rest day and night, those who worship the beast and his image, and whoever receives the mark of his name. So I want to pause right there. Because this is kind of the part that I want to sort out. We talked a long time ago about kind of general afterlife type of things. But here we kind of have our first mention of punishment or torment. A forever and ever even attached to it. Verse 11. So I want to sort out the doctrine of Hades or Sheol. And Gehenna and what we refer to as hell. That's even going to be separated, teased out a little bit into the lake of fire. So everybody tracking? Is this a worthwhile little excursus so that as we move through the rest of the book? Like these are some pretty big ideas and really things that have taken on their own like cultural significance, their own descriptors. And not all of it is biblical. So as we read, we're going to be able to sort some of this stuff out. At least that's my hope. So. This is just an outline for the chapter. I'm going to go ahead and erase this. Oh, did, did you, anybody see the copies for chapter 14 that? Ah, awesome, great. So if anybody needs one of those, oh yeah, also there are 17 spots left for Passover. 12, 12, that's awesome. So wow, okay, so 12 spots left. So if that is something you want to do, huh?
It just changes minute by minute.
It really does. Well, actually that when they first put it up, they were talking about refreshing, like checking it and like every 20 minutes. Or I'm sorry, every couple of minutes, it was like 20 more. And so there was like 100 in that first hour, so. So it's exciting. I'm really excited about it. So, okay, so let's sort this out. And I'm going to write a whole bunch of names up here and we're going to do our best to like keep them straight. So we have Hades. You know, I'm going to put a G up here. And an H up here, so G for Greek, H for Hebrew. All right, so we have Hades. And we have Sheol. Remember anytime we are talking about Greek, Greek language. We're also talking about Greek mythology. That's how kind of loaded it is, those terms. When things transfer from one language to another, you get all the cultural baggage with it. Because you're trying to find an equivalency unless there's some level of transliteration like, you know, where we get some words from another language, but yet they kind of keep the core pronunciation, right? A transliteration of that into our language. And we're going to see that here in a second. But by and large. When we read about Sheol in the Greek Septuagint, it becomes Hades. In our New Testament, which the vast majority, 99% of the documents are Greek. The earliest ones. Place of the dead is referred to as Hades. Now, there's going to be a few others. So. When we talk about a place. When we get into a place of punishment. So Gehennam or Benhennam. Also Gehenna. This is going to be a little bit tricky because. Here. We have Tartarus. To make this even more confusing, we have a lone word where Gehenna. In Greek. Becomes Genna. And this is from the Strong's number 1067.
Wasn't Gehenna actually a physical?
Oh, we're going to get into that. I'm just, this is just the introduction. We're done, I'm just introducing people and then we're going to go, you know, through their history and background. So, but yes, you're right. So, okay, so are we, are we tracking so far? Greek to Hebrew, remember you have a whole bunch of people in the Middle East. Right? You have a Jewish background believer, but what is the lingua franca of the time? Right? What is the common language? Greek. Right? And so when they are talking about these things now, as good Jews, they would be going to Hebrew school. And so they would learn the Hebrew for these concepts, right? The Hebrew names. But also in society, they would be running into these Greek names for it. Torture, yes.
What did you say though?
Yeah, so this is going to be a place of punishment. Yeah, torture, just jump right into that. So. Now, what we're going to have in the mix here is the lake of fire. And as we talk through this. We're going to see where that fits in. Because that's, that's kind of a fun one. Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Actually, you know what, we were talking, we were talking earlier in the week and we were talking. I was asked, that's right, I was asked, I use that word liberally, I really do. And so, but. Asked, I was like, hey, we're going to talk about the lake of fire Sunday night. And I was encouraged to open with, hey, and we're going to just jump right in. Boo, boo. All right. Now, you might be wondering, it's like, hey, where does hell come in? Right? Where does that fall? Well. It doesn't belong in Greek or Hebrew. So. Hell, actually. The, the word origin is. It's like a composite here. We have old High German, old Norse and old English. Most scholars lean towards an old Norse origin. And if you're wondering. Why old Norse? Well. That's think Vikings. And Viking mythology. We'll get into that story in just a second. But like I said. Over time, some of these words get borrowed into our language, right? And they just stick. And then there's whole concepts associated with them. And sometimes there's some cultural baggage gets drug into it as well. And it doesn't help that we read our English Bibles. And they throw these new, new, 1,000 years old, new words into it. Because they have all of the concepts and everything else. I mean, imagine if when you were reading your New Testament, you were reading Genna or Hades. As we talked before, Hades is the place of the dead. And so when you're reading it and you're like, oh, that's speaking of death or the place of the dead. But then you came across Genna or Tartarus, Tartarus only one time. And you'd be like, oh, that's a place of punishment. Same thing with the Old Testament or Hebrew Bible. But a lot of times what you're reading is hell. So, all right. So let me kind of read through and unpack some of this a little bit more. Let. Okay. Just going to go ahead and I want to read through the. Etymology of hell. So old Norse hell, H E L, from Proto Germanic Halia. One who covers up or hides something. Hell was the name of Loki's daughter who ruled over the evil dead in Niflheim. The lowest of all worlds. So that is the origin. And it might have reinforced the English word as a transfer of a pagan concept to Christian theology and its vocabulary. So the word hell being derived from that, we see it entering into vocabulary about 725 AD. It's used in the King James Version of the Bible to capture the Jewish concept of Gehenna as the final destination of the wicked. So with a lot of Northern European immigration into the United States. And even earlier on, you have, you know, Vikings, Viking conquests of the British Isles of Northern Europe. Basically, you know, a lot of Christendom, Christendom at that time. And so these words enter into vocabulary. And a lot of those concepts, so. As the King James Bible is written and all, I mean, by that time, it would have already been around for. So if we have the word coming into being about 725. Think of different conquests of British Isles, I mean, you're already looking at seven, 800 years. And I mean, think about how much language has changed for us since 1200. Good luck trying to understand anybody from 1200. That's just how, how quickly language evolves, right? I think most of us even have trouble understanding some of the kids today. That was too easy, so. But it's still, it's something that, you know, it's just to understand where these, you know, concepts. Nobody would have said hell in Jesus's day. Just like they wouldn't have said Jesus either. But that's, that's language, right? There's not a right or wrong, it's just something to know, be knowledgeable about. And be discerning and kind of sorting some of those things. And mind you, like, I'm not going to go too far into it, but you know, like Dante's Inferno. You know, the Divine Comedy, like all of these things, like, you know, they influence perceptions of hell. Not to mention like Roman Catholicism and their doctrine of purgatory. You know, of which they draw from some of the apocryphal works. And so have they, as you know, all of that, I mean, Roman Catholicism was primarily Christianity for a very long time, 1,500 years. And so. It influences concepts and perceptions. And that's something for even evangelical Christianity to try to unpack. Right? Especially, you know, for people that say, we're going back to the book, we're going back to scriptural authority. What does scripture say about these places? All right, any questions on kind of the origin of hell? Norse mythology is fascinating in and of itself. You can actually see a lot of. There's a lot of points of comparison. With Greek mythology. So. That muddies the water even more. Okay, so any questions on that? I know I didn't get too far, but we are going to talk about place of the dead and place of punishment. All right, here we go. Let's start with Sheol. So we are talking Hebrew, we're talking Old Testament, all right? Sheol. The Old Testament often uses the word grave and sheol interchangeably. Sheol meant grave exclusively, not necessarily the netherworld, but this view has been predominantly disregarded. Bloch Smith notes at the language of judges, chapter 2, verse 10. After that whole generation had been gathered to their ancestors may illustrate the ancient Israelite practice of placing the dead in a repository and letting the bones collect underneath the death shroud in a bone bed. So there's all kinds of different, you know, burial practices of that time. But by and large, what you have is people being placed in the earth. So, ah, this is also a good point. Okay, I know I made Flat Earth jokes before, but this is kind of an ancient concept. So. You have the inhabitable space. Right? It's me, it could be you, whichever, it's fine. But then underneath here. You have. The place of the dead. Sheol or Hades. And then down at the very bottom, I don't know if anybody can see this, sorry. Is Tartarus or. What becomes associated in Hebrew Gehenna. A place of punishment. And then you have heaven here and you can talk about the different levels of heaven, right? Just like we've broken it up into like, you know. Man, it's been a long time, but you know, our stratosphere, our, you know, just the like our inhabitable plane here and then where the birds fly and then up a little bit further than that. And then where the sun is and so all the different levels and then God's presence. But it's not. So it's still considered. So being buried in caves, even though we would think of a cave as being above ground, it's they wouldn't have considered that, they would have been, that would have been an entryway, a doorway into Hades or Sheol. And so even whether it's a mountain or whatever, that it would have still been in the earth. And then, you know, there wouldn't have been any negative perceptions of like drawing water from the earth. Because you know, really. The negative perception is kind of twofold, one, it's the mystery of death. But then two, just knowing that what goes to Hades doesn't come back. Beyond that, it's not necessarily that it was evil personified. So what was said here, so we were talking about wells and perception of, you know, getting into the earth. So in Ukraine, out away, yeah, country village, rural villages. That they would appease the spirits of the wells because that is another maybe entryway into the realm of the dead. Wow.
That is so interesting to me.
That is. But yeah, so there you go, that matches with that thought, so. Yeah, so would hell have been considered? So if. As you ask, if hell would have been considered a place of the dead or a place of punishment. That's, that's difficult to say because in Norse mythology. And that's actually, that's the only thing that's in view right now. In Norse mythology, hell was, so the daughter of Loki was entrapped there because of how evil she was. And actually, there's some stories where like half of her is this beautiful innocent little girl. And then the other half is the, the face of death. So. So she was actually chained there to be, and then there was a dog placed at the entrance to that realm. To keep her there, but others out. Oh, yeah, yeah, so because that it was a place of punishment for Loki's daughter hell. Right? That is where it gets borrowed into this. So, and then that whole idea gets expanded later on within Norse mythology too. Okay, so. So within the Greek idea of death, you would have spirits. Like the body being placed in the earth and then the spirit going to a place. Within like underground. And that's where they would reside with full consciousness. Later on, that gets broken up, separated into two places, Tartarus and Elysium, which is kind of like a paradise. I am not an expert on all of these things. But says as I've read, right? Regurgitating, so. Within the Hebrew thought, Hebrew perspective of Sheol. A lot of times. We want to separate like body and soul or, you know, different things like that. Where the body went, the soul went as well, like there wasn't that separation. So being placed into the ground was that place awaiting. A resurrection or a resurrection to judgment. Okay? Now. To that. The one exception that we have. Everybody's thinking of Samuel, I know, and the witch of Endor. But the witch of Endor calls the spirit or ghost of Samuel up. And I think, you know, we talked about this Sunday night seminar a couple of years ago. I think it's been a couple of years ago now, but you know. I mean. I absolutely 110% believe that that was Samuel. Scripture identifies the spirit of Samuel. Samuel pronounces a prophetic word upon Saul. The witch is terrified. Because. Because it's Samuel. So for all of those reasons, like, and mind you. Just because it works doesn't mean you're supposed to do it. I, we'll talk a little bit more about this later, but like in God's law, there's a lot of things that are said to do and not to do. They're not, you're not being told not to do them because they don't work. It's because you are transgressing laws of this created universe that you are not meant to do. Those are the things that fall into the wickedness of the fallen ones of witchcraft, divination, all of those things. You are not like forbidden from doing those because they don't work. You're forbidden from doing those because that is not God's intent. It is not God's will for his people. Those are breaking universal laws. Things bigger than any of us could even fathom. So. We'll get there. Yep, no, no, we're, so we're building into that. And I already kind of gave a little bit of the way with like Elysium and, you know, Tartarus. Because really what you're going to see a Hebrew equivalent with Abraham's bosom. And what looks to be a place of torment. Once again. What complicates all of that is Jesus is telling a story. Is this? A made up illustration? Is this something that he has seen or witnessed himself? There's lots of questions around it and how to interpret that. He's, I mean, because he's just kind of popping off like with a story. Was he illustrating a point? Instead of creating an afterlife doctrine? A lot of times we just read it and be like, oh, doctrine, but. So, okay, all right, see? What time is it, all right? Let's see, moving on here with Sheol. Compared to the descriptions of the Egyptian and Mesopotamian lands of the dead, very few descriptions of Sheol exist. The biblical text, text describes Sheol as dark. Lamentations 3, 6. Dusty. Job, chapter 17, verse 16. Silent. Psalms 31, verses 17 and 18. And Psalm 94, 17. Several passages note that Sheol has gates. Isaiah 38, verse 10. Job 38, verse 17. Jonah, chapter 2, verse 7. Further biblical details regarding Sheol include it is a place of great equity. All are equal from kings to slaves. It is the place where both the wicked and the just reside. It is located under the earth, Numbers, chapter 16, verses 30 through 33. Numbers, chapter 16. Verses 30 through 33. And we'll read a bunch of passages here in a little bit. It has bars to prevent escape, Job, chapter 17, verse 16. And I hope you understand that like as we're talking through this, some of this is just metaphorical language. some of this is just metaphorical language. Basically, what Job is saying, you know, there's not like physical bars. But those who go, don't come back until the time of resurrection. "Only God can rescue his people from Sheol." Psalm 49, verse 15. "It's a place where no one can praise God." Psalm 88, verse 10. Once again, the author being poetic.
Say that one more time again, about what he didn't do?
It's a place where no one can praise God. This psalmist is basically like, okay, see a dead body, it's not talking. So, they're just doing the math of, here you go. But, you know, the point stands. Right? Like, I'm alive, I'm gonna praise the Lord. The dead don't praise you. There is no understanding in Sheol, Proverbs 9:18, 21:16. Once again, just what is a dead body able to do? So, it's kind of, once again, the, like, I'm not lining these out to create like doctrinal points on Sheol, but this is where it's mentioned. This is how the biblical authors viewed basically the dead. Okay, so before we go any further, I also want to just muddy the water a little bit more, but at points, so, I think everybody knows, in Greek mythology, there was a god named Hades. Right? And so his realm becomes known as Hades. So, there's a personification. Sheol kind of gets the same thing. Not just in Hebrew, but even in, when we talk about the New Testament, Hades makes that appearance. Not that he's a separate god, but just a personification, that Hades gets thrown into the lake of fire. It's not like the entire underworld gets thrown into the lake of fire. But it's death. There will be no more death after that point. Everybody tracking? Water too muddy? Okay, we'll keep going. So, "In addition, biblical information regarding Sheol sometimes appears contradictory. For example, some biblical text describes Sheol as a place where God is not present." Psalm 6:5, Psalm 88:5, also verses 10 through 12, Isaiah 38, verse 18. While others specify that God reaches even into Sheol. Amos chapter 9, verse 2, Psalm 139, verse 8.
So which way is it?
So, I would, I think it's, okay. Which way is it? I think it's important to know that there is not a place that has not been created by God. God made the lake of fire. God made, this made Sheol. So, now, how do we? This really gets into the doctrine of the omnipresence of God. Is God present in those places? Do we believe that God is everywhere? Is God in a water bottle? When we talk about his presence, do we mean that his influence, his authority? I'm not looking for answers, I'm just letting you chew on this for a second. So, I think it's important to separate those things out. Honestly, it dips into a little bit more Neoplatonism. Plato, right? Plato, not Playdo. Plato. But, because honestly, Plato believed that there was a little bit of God in everything. And that's actually like pretty common among a lot of pagan religions, that there's a little bit of the perfect in everything. I'm not comfortable saying that there's God in a water bottle, or a cup, or whatever. We are the only image bearers. And having his Holy Spirit indwelling us, right? So, when we talk about Sheol, I am much more comfortable to say that there is no place in any and all of created reality that is not under the authority of God. So, even the place of the dead, his authority is there. If God wanted to, well, actually, we've already talked a little bit about the resurrection. That's God robbing the grave, robbing Hades, Sheol, right, by bringing these bodies up, bringing them back to life, and he does that on his own authority and capability. That should be absolutely reassuring for all of us, right? Amen? So, yeah, that's important for us to understand, and so it doesn't mean that like the Holy Spirit's residing in the realm of the dead, or whatever. We don't have to phrase it like that. We don't have to frame it like that. It can just be God's sovereignty and authority over every area of the universe of our reality. So. All right, any other questions? All right. So, the biblical text refers to the inhabitants of Sheol as Rephaim, or shades. Here's a fun book, Shades of Sheol. Goodness, Death and Afterlife in the Old Testament by Philip Johnston. That has been really good. Shades of Sheol. That word shades is used of the Rephaim. Yes?
What did you say about the inhabitants?
That they're known as Rephaim. R-E-P-H-A-I-M. Or shades. And you can see this word in Isaiah chapter 26, verse 14, verse 19, and Psalm 88, verse 10. "The word Rephaim is also used to describe a race of giants in the Old Testament. Certain Ugaritic texts help distinguish and reconcile the two meanings in the Ugaritic liturgical text, Ktu 1, Book 1, 161. Rephaim referred to the line of dead kings and heroes, the giants of old, a meaning which some biblical texts also confirm." Isaiah 14, verse 9. A scholar named Horowitz notes that eventually the word Rephaim preserved only vestiges of the original meaning, and was broadened to include all the dead in Sheol, not just dead nobility. Actually, in, some perceptions were that, and more in line with what Heiser has taught, the Rephaim referring to the offspring of the fallen ones and mortal women, producing the Nephilim, who after they died, being neither angel or human, but some mix, were not allowed to rest in Sheol, or were imprisoned in Tartarus. And so they were left to roam and moving freely between the realm of the dead and among the living. So, but if they're among the living, they have to inhabit something, so. All right, getting into all kinds of stuff. New Testament usage. In the Septuagint, the word Sheol is often, is most often translated as Hades, which refers to the netherworld in Greek mythology. In the New Testament, Hades resembles Sheol in that people must descend into both places. Matthew 11:23, Luke 10:15. "And both locations are inescapable." "The main difference between Hades and Sheol is that the only, is that only the wicked descend into Hades." 1 Peter 3:19. "The torments of Hades, later called hell, are not intricately detailed until post-biblical times." Actually, that's what we were talking about before, the doctrine of hell developing much later. Don't misunderstand me, there was always a place of punishment. So, I'm not saying that like hell was just concocted, created much later on. Not what I'm saying. All right, so, let's go to some of the verses of Sheol. Oh, that, I don't think I printed that one. Okay, well, we're gonna skip to Hades in the New Testament. All right, so Revelation chapter 20, verses 13 and 14. So, remember, even as we're talking about a place of punishment, it's understanding the place of the dead, and kind of separating those things out. So, it's kind of what we're doing here. Verse 13 to 14, "And the sea gave up the dead which were in it; and death and Hades gave up the dead which were in them. And they were judged, every one of them according to their deeds. Then death and Hades were thrown into the lake of fire." This is the second death, the lake of fire. The deeds, every one of them according to their deeds, that's not death and Hades, like they didn't have deeds. It was those that were brought up from death and Hades. Matthew chapter 16, verse 18. What's gonna be really fun is when we come across one of these verses, and your Bible translated it as hell. Because that would not be correct. All right, Matthew 16, verse 18. Fun, fun fact, I'll be preaching on this next Sunday. "I also say to you, say to you, that you are Peter, and upon this rock I will build my church; and the gates of Hades will not overpower it." So, accessory of Philippi, spoiler alert, there is a temple there, and a cave. There's a couple of temples, but there is a cave there that was known as the gates of Hades. All right, going back just a couple chapters, Matthew 11:23. "And you, Capernaum, will not be exalted to heaven, will you? You will descend to Hades; for if the miracles had occurred in Sodom, which occurred in you, it would have remained to this day." Descend to Hades. So, basically, the town would die, die out. Luke chapter 10 is the same thing, "And you, Capernaum, who are exalted to heaven, will be brought down to Hades." Acts chapter 2, verse 27. So, this is quoting Psalm 16. "Because you will not abandon my soul to Hades, nor allow your holy one to undergo decay." 1 Corinthians 15. Did, let me just ask, when you read the New Testament, do you notice the word Hades popping up? No? Does everybody in your Bible translations, do they have the word Hades in these verses? Does anybody not have those? Just curious. Oh, ESV has hell?
Standard King James Version has hell.
ESV and King James both have hell. NLT, what'd you have? ESV. Interesting. Well, the word here is Hades.
In, in what reference again?
The ESV, NLT, and King James all had hell.
Of what verse?
As a translate, oh, I'm sorry, verse 27, Acts 2:27. Oh. Well, so in Matthew, that one, which one? Matthew? Really? Matthew 16:18, and those verses had hell?
So where were you on 1 Corinthians?
Oh, I'm sorry, so that's where we're going next. 1 Corinthians 15, verse 55.
The Acts 2:27 actually said, "For you will not leave my soul among the dead," with a footnote to Hades.
Okay.
That's an anarchy.
Yeah, actually, has any other translations been using the word like, you know, to the dead, or in death, as opposed to Hades? KJV just went all in.
1 Corinthians 15 what?
55, 15:55, yeah, Ashley. Yeah, I mean, realm of the dead, Hades, I mean, I, those are way better than hell. Because, I mean, literally and figuratively, but like, because really, I mean, because hell is such a misnomer with it, because it's so loaded with like, I mean, it's punishment. You know, and even as we're talking about, like, and we're not even there yet, in talking about Gehenna, and Ginnah, and Tartarus, and things like that, so.
But I mean, in the gates of Hades, you know, it doesn't.
The punishment is that they would be no more. So, that's, that's the thing, when we're talking about Gehenna, Tartarus, Ginnah, hell, like, it's on, ongoing. Death is just the beginning of your bad day. And it won't end. So, that's the thing, so, so when they are talking about going, but when it's going down, you know, to Hades, meaning it's going to be no more. So, just like Sodom, which Jesus points out, they were destroyed, they all died. That's it. He's not making a statement about their afterlife. And that's the thing, a lot of times, we assume with death, or how someone dies, or something like that, we assume their afterlife state. And that's not always congruent. All right. Okay, well, we'll, we'll continue wading through Hades, and eventually we'll get, we'll get there. Hopefully not, but, just kidding. So, 1 Corinthians, man, I got, 15:55. Oh, so, in verse 55 here, quoting from Hosea 13:14, "O death, where is your victory? O death, where is your sting?" So, the Greek word there is actually Hades, so New American Standard even translates that. But then again, quoting from a Hebrew source, so, the equivalent there would have been Sheol. Revelation 1:18, as we read many months ago, a year ago. Revelation 1:18, as we read many months ago, a year ago. We have verse 18. "And the living one, and I was dead; and behold, I am alive forevermore, and I have the keys of death and of Hades." All right, Revelation 6:8. "And I looked, and behold, an ashen horse; and he who sat on it has the name death; and Hades was following with him. Authority was given to them over a fourth of the earth to kill with sword, and with famine, and with pestilence, and by the wild beast of the earth." All right, and then Luke, chapter 16. I thought about saving it, but we'll just go ahead and do this. Luke 16, verse 23. Luke 16, verse 23. Actually, just since it's already been brought up, I want to go back, I'm gonna read 14, and then I'll jump to 19. "So now the Pharisees, who were lovers of money, were listening to all these things, and were scoffing at him. And he said to them..." So, and he goes through there. Verse 19, now, so Jesus, like, there's not a break here in the recording. Okay, so as Luke has compiled this, as he has organized it, and borrowing, whether it be from Mark or Matthew. "Now there was a rich man, and he habitually dressed in purple and fine linen, joyously living in splendor every day. And a poor man, named Lazarus, was laid at his gate, covered with sores, and longing to be fed with the crumbs which were falling from the rich man's table; besides, even the dogs were coming and licking his sores. Now the poor man died, and was carried away by the angels to Abraham's bosom; and the rich man also died and was buried. In Hades he lifted up his eyes, being in torment, and saw Abraham far away, and Lazarus in his bosom. And he cried out and said, 'Father Abraham, have mercy on me, and send Lazarus, so that he may dip the tip of his finger in water and cool off my tongue, for I am in agony in this flame.' But Abraham said, 'Child, remember that during your life you received your good things, and likewise Lazarus, bad things; but now he is being comforted there, comforted here, and you are in agony. And besides all this, between us and you there is a great chasm fixed, so that those who wish to come over from here to you will not be able, and that none may cross over from there to here, to us.' And he said, 'Then I beg you, Father, that you send him to my father's house; for I have five brothers, in order that he may warn them, so that they will not also come to this place of torment.' But Abraham said, 'They have Moses and the prophets; let them hear them.' But he said, 'No, Father Abraham; but if someone goes to them from the dead, they will repent.' But he said to him, 'If they do not listen to Moses and the prophets, they will not be persuaded, even if someone rises from the dead.'" So is this a firsthand account? Is he telling a story to illustrate a point? Is he just absolutely threatening the Pharisees? Because of how they lived? And how they treated others? Is this a story drawing doctrine from? The, the word, and that's, and that's the thing, you can't get away from the Greek manuscripts. The word is Hades. Now, we're gonna get into some where the Greek is Genna. So once again, just muddy in the water. So, all right, so we're gonna go.
But you didn't answer your question. Is this doctrine, or is this?
Oh, oh, I wasn't going to. You know, there's, there's points where I give like, you know, hey, here's, here's where we land on this, here's where I land on this, here's the spectrum of thought on this. This is gonna be one of those where here's the spectrum of thought, here's the perspectives on it. Because it's, it is, it is unique within the Gospels. Like, Jesus gets into a story with such specifics as we don't see in many of the other stories. In his parables, right? I mean, and plus you have Abraham speaking, right? With a rich man, and really, like, what was the sin of the rich man? He lived in luxury. Like, it doesn't say that he was evil and wicked. And so there was a very, very clear point to this story. If we take it as doctrine, and a lot of people would just focus on like, oh, well, there's a place of the dead where people can get punished, and there's flames. But then there's a chasm, and then there's a place called Abraham's bosom, right, where people can be comforted. They'll focus on the logistics of it without thinking, oh, I am living way too well in this life. Like, the implications of it are so much more vast, like, and reminder, we live better than any of the kings of history. I was joking in the group's newsletter, how, you know, we live in our climate-controlled houses, and we'll get into our climate-controlled chariots, and travel to climate-controlled places. Where we have Amazon, anything you want, then 24, 48 hours, from all over the world. You can eat foods from the other side of the world that could be flown in and eaten fresh daily. I mean, you know, it just, the comparisons are ridiculous. we live the life of luxury. Even for the poorest among us. I'm sorry?
And, and he probably wasn't loving his neighbor?
Well, and that's the idea. He wasn't taking care, yeah, as Lazarus was laid at his gates. With sores, and I mean, obviously in great need. Rich man turned a blind eye to him. Yes, because. So with Sheol, we don't have a lot of information, like, there's not a place of punishment. It's basically, you know, even from the Psalmist or any of the Old Testament authors, it's just a place where you are no more. Like, not disappearing, it's just you have fallen asleep, you have been gathered to your ancestors. It's a place of just silence, of rest, right? I mean, even when Samuel's brought up, "Why have you awakened me from my slumber?" So kind of in the rhythms of, you know, life, like, when we go to sleep at night, right? And then that word, sleep, you know, like, oh, he has fallen asleep, even used metaphorical of death. I mean, go to sleep at night, we close our eyes, and if you are sleeping really well, you know, taking the magnesium and eating pistachios and all the other tricks to like, you know. Close your eyes, wake up, it's been eight hours. Whoa. Nice, right? And that's the idea, is that, you know, that last time you close your eyes, the next time you open them, whether it's been a split second, or 4,000 years, you're in the presence of the Lord. So now in Hades, like, it did take on degrees of punishment, not quite till like Dante's Inferno. But there were places that, you know, closer to Tartarus that were not pleasant. And there were plenty of other kind of punishments that were given by the Greek gods to some that were in Hades. Well, but remember, like, where the, where the poor man is, where Lazarus is, is also referred to as Hades. Like, it's the realm. Unless we're talking about separating out Abraham's bosom as a whole different place, and then if that were the case, that would be something completely new. That is what most people, when they, when they read this, that's what they're, that's the idea. Is that within Hades, or the place of the dead, there's a chasm. And so here's the rich man, and then here's Lazarus. But we're getting into, like, here's the, the nitty gritty of things that like, just don't know much about. And so that's why, like, really, how problematic this whole story is. And within the context of Jesus's encounter with the Pharisees, it makes sense that it's just an open rebuke to them. Instead of Jesus creating new doctrine on the afterlife. Now that all that's clear as mud, we are gonna go back and we are gonna read up on Gehenna in the Old Testament, and see how that gets brought forward into our New Testament documents. So Gehenna, and we're also talking about the Greek word Genna, because remember the Greek, Old Testament is the Septuagint, and so that was translated as Genna. A transliteration of Valley of Hinnim. Valley of Hinnim. A boundary marker between Judah and Benjamin. We read that in Joshua, chapter 15, verse 8. And Joshua 18, verse 16. "Jeremiah began to associate the place name with God's divine wrath and judgment," Jeremiah 7, verse 32. "Therefore, behold, days are coming, declares Yahweh, when it will no longer be called Topheth, or the valley of the son of Hinnim." So in Hebrew, son of is Ben. Ben. "So the son of Hinnim, but the valley of the slaughter; for they will bury in Topheth, because there is no other place. The dead bodies of this people will be food for the birds of the sky, and for the beasts of the earth, and no one will frighten them away." That is Jeremiah, chapter 7, verse 32. And then Jeremiah 19. Verse 6. "Therefore, behold, days are coming, declares Yahweh, when this place will no longer be called Topheth, or the valley of Ben-Hinnim, but rather the valley of slaughter. And it was called this because kings Ahaz and Manasseh began sacrificing their children to Molech there." So 2 Kings, chapter 16. Let's see, just starting at verse 2. "Ahaz was twenty years old when he became king, and he reigned sixteen years in Jerusalem; and he did not do what was right in the sight of Yahweh as God, as his father David had done; but he walked in the ways of the kings of Israel, and even made his sons pass through the fire according to the abominations of the nations, whom Yahweh had driven out from before the sons of Israel. He sacrificed and burned incense on the high places and on the hills, and under every green tree." So we also look at 2 Kings 21, verse 6. "He made his sons pass through the fire, practiced witchcraft, and used divination, and dealt with mediums and spiritus. He did much evil in the sight of Yahweh, provoking him to anger." 2 Kings, chapter 21, verse 6. "The term Gehenna is primarily used in the synoptic gospels as, or Genna, as a symbol of future eschatological judgment." Matthew, chapter 23, verse 33. "The term is almost always used by Jesus himself, except..." "and bears the sense of a place of physical and spiritual torment and destruction. The gospel writers base their usage on Jeremiah's reinterpretation of the sacrifices in the Hinnim Valley, and Isaiah's final prophecy of the undying worm and unquenchable fire." So let's go to Isaiah 66, verse 24. Isaiah 66. Starting at verse 21. "Who also takes some of them for priests and for Levites, says Yahweh, for just as the new heavens and the new earth, which I make, will endure before me, declares Yahweh; so your offspring in your name will endure; and it shall be from new moon to new moon, and from Sabbath to Sabbath. All mankind will come to bow down before me, says Yahweh. Then they will go forth and look on the corpses of the men who have transgressed against me; for there worm will not die, and their fire will not be quenched, and they will be an abhorrence to all mankind." The Hinnim Valley, modern day, the Wadi Er Rababi, runs down the west and south sides of Mount Zion into the Kidron Valley, and southeast down through the Judean wilderness to the Dead Sea. So we're talking about an actual physical place. If you haven't, you know, picked up so far, so as, you know, Jerusalem Zion is shaped kind of in a V, you have valleys running, and there's actually technically three valleys. But this one was used by these kings, like what we read in 2 Kings, and what Jeremiah was calling them out for was for pagan sacrifice and child sacrifice. It also, after that time, became a dump. So people would dump all their trash and refuse and everything in that area pretty much to desecrate a place that was already desecrated. They couldn't use it for anything else. Nobody was gonna have a garden there. So it just became the dump outside the city. "So according to tribal allotment, it formed the boundary lines between Benjamin and Judah through the valley, though the valley itself remained in Jebusite hands until King David captured it. It took on theological significance when Ahaz and Manasseh, kings of Judah, began to sacrifice their children to pagan gods. King Josiah later defiled the foreign worship site, so that it could no longer be used for illicit sacrifice. Jeremiah identified the place as an eschatological symbol of God's judgment on the faithless rebels of Judah, renaming it the Valley of Slaughter, as we've read. The last mention of Hinnim in the Old Testament is by Nehemiah, who records the resettlement of Judah. He mentions those who dwelt within Jerusalem, and those who moved to territories outside the city boundary, from Beersheba to Hinnim, demonstrating that the valley was the southwestern boundary of the city. It is unlikely, however, that the city proper had expanded to the edge of the valley until the Assyrian invasion of Sinakorib in 701 B.C. during the reign of Hezekiah." The intertestamental period. So when I say the intertestamental period, that is kind of bringing like, the, at the close of the Old Testament. And just before, you know, the New Testament opens, which is generally thought to be about 4, 5 B.C. So we've got about a 400-year spread. 400 year spread between the Testaments. The theme of the accursed valley is resumed and developed in extra biblical literature as an eternal, but still localized place of judgment. Bearing the new name Gehenna. So this shows up in 2 Baruch, 4 Ezra. Even 1 Enoch recognizes that as a place of judgment or torment. As we read Isaiah 66, 24, a tradition parallel to the eschatologized, oh my goodness, judgment in Jeremiah states their worm will not die, nor will there be fire be quenched. Though the two symbols, the valley and the unquenchable fire, do not refer to each other directly, they are associated with each other in extra biblical text, namely the Sibylline Oracles. Within the New Testament, these symbols are largely interchangeable metaphors. Like Mark 9. The association is likely due to the intertestamental synthesis of Jeremiah 7, 32 and Isaiah 66, 24. We just read two different verses and we connect them. We know it's talking about the same place, and so it's like, oh, well, those things happened there. The original burnt sacrifices offered in Henem, or the tradition that the Maccabees burned enemy corpses, corpses in it. So that's another thing that happened. The Maccabees took the enemies that they had killed, and they burned the corpses in the Valley of Ben Henem. It probably does not gain this association because the garbage of the city was burned there. This is a very late tradition, recorded only in the Middle Ages circa around AD 1200 by Rabbi David Kimhe. In the New Testament, of the 12 explicit references to Gehenna in the New Testament, 11 are in or parallel to Matthew. The occurrence of Gehenna in Matthew 10, 28 and Luke 12, 5, which has no representation in the supposed source material of Mark. So obviously this author is taking source material, the Q idea, or Mark being the earliest, and Matthew borrowing. I think I've told you guys, it might've been a long time ago, I don't buy into that. Matthew was an eyewitness, saw these things and recorded these things himself. I don't know why anybody would rely on Mark's material. And if you've ever read Mark and then go read Matthew, there's a whole lot more detail there with Matthew. So anyways, tangent over. So I can get salty about that one. I think it's silly. So it's just one of those where, okay, all right, all right, so. Akedama, the field of Judas Iscariot's purchase and demise has traditionally been associated with the Valley of Henem. Hmm, that's right. The pottery gate from Jeremiah 19, 2, and the potters' field, Matthew 27 and Acts 1, likely point to the same location. This identification would be significant regarding the New Testament opinion of Judas's anticipated final state. Gehenna tends to point to a future reality, one to be experienced after the day of judgment. As such, it may not speak to the current state of the unrepented deceased, as Hades does. Luke 16, 23. All right, so all the verses for Genna in the New Testament. Everybody reading? So these are the ones that should, actually, I wouldn't even, it would just would have been better if they said Genna instead of hell. But this one, in this idea, hell would be closer. So, all right, Matthew 5, 22. And so I'm reading from the New American Standard. But I say to you that everyone who is angry with his brother shall be guilty before the court, and whoever says to his brother, "You good for nothing," shall be guilty before the Supreme Court, and whoever says, "You fool," shall be guilty enough to go into the fiery hell. Or Genna. Then in Matthew 5, 29. If your right eye makes you stumble, tear it out. Throw it from you, for it is better for you to lose one of the parts of your body than for your whole body to be thrown into hell. Jesus was not being literal there. I just want to let you know. That's a, there's a whole rabbinic teaching style called kavekomer, and that's a thing. So he wasn't being literal. Yes.
What word is originally used? I mean, they put in hell, but what?
Genna. So it would actually be this one. So this is like the, the Greek transliteration of the Hebrew word. Because remember, we're dealing with native, like Hebrew, Arabic speakers, however you want to work that. But they were reading their Bibles, their Old Testament in Hebrew. And so when they're talking about these concepts in common language, they just took that directly. I mean, there's just not a, maybe because Hades was so prolific in just the understanding and idea, they didn't need to have a borrowed word for shail. So in the manuscripts, we see Hades written as opposed to shail, but we see Genna written instead of Tartarus, except for one time. And we'll get there. So, no, great question. Any other questions as we're moving through? Everybody tracking? Okay. All right. Verse 30, if your right hand makes you stumble, cut it off, throw it from you. For it is better for you to lose one of the parts of your body than for your whole body to go into hell. Matthew 10. Yeah, kavekomer is a teaching style called light and heavy. So the light part is, so it's, it's kind of up a little bit because the light part is losing a body part versus going to hell. But the lighter part still, which is highlighted in this, is don't lust, don't steal. Right? You want to cut a body part off that you think is going to prevent you from doing those things, but really it's in your heart. So repent. But what he's saying is, you know, if you're going to go to that length, well, why don't you cut out like your whole context for where you do that sin? And take such extreme measures to really root out the sin out of your heart. So it's kind of the light and heavy. The heavy here is the action taken to prevent a worst destination. But what it draws focus to is like, be radical about how you're rooting out sin in your life, but recognize where it's coming from. So. That. So, you know, and I mean, I can't think of anything offhand, but like, you know, a lot of times we draw a drastic conclusion to something. And really what we're spotlighting is, you know, sometimes we're spotlighting an overreaction. Or what's the real issue here? Okay, 10, 28. There you go. Do not fear those who kill the body, but are unable to kill the soul, but rather fear him who is able to destroy both soul and body in hell. So you can add that one to how bad Genna or hell is, where body and soul, the essence of who you are, is completely destroyed. Matthew 18, verse 9. So maybe at this point, you know, you're thinking, has anybody ever heard that hell's not mentioned in the Bible? Has anybody ever heard that? Like that word, hell? Yeah. So what they're talking about is the Old Norse word. So, I mean, you could easily say, yeah, the word "the" is not mentioned in the Bible, in the original manuscripts. Like no English word is mentioned in the original manuscripts, right? So it's just a silly concept. And like, that's why, that's why it's good for us to like, that's why I think it's good for us to like, kind of comb through this, just to understand that we're not just talking about a generic place of death, where the dead reside. We're talking about Genna, a place of punishment, and that's exactly contextually what we're reading about. Right?
I don't know if that.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, absolutely. Uh, yeah, I mean, picking up an Arabic Bible and reading Allah and, you know, boy, that'd be confusing. And so, you know, what, what they're talking about, and that's the Hebrew loan word, a transliteration into the Greek manuscripts. They're avoiding, I mean, really a lot of, well, and I, and I don't even know if it's so much avoiding something because we see Peter use the word Tartarus as opposed to really this kind of being evidence for kind of a, a native Hebrew speaker with a Hebrew mindset. And, and just taking a concept that they're familiar with and drawing it right into that text. I think that's, that's what that would be evidence of. And, and you know, but like, we also see Peter use that, and we'll get to that here in a little bit. And it's funny, you know, why would he choose to do that? Why would he choose to use that word as opposed to that one? So maybe, you know, maybe he was writing in a different context. So when we get 2 Peter, we'll get there eventually. So. All right, Matthew 18, verse 9. If your eyes cause you to stumble, pluck it out, throw it from you. It is better for you to enter life with one eye than to have two eyes and be cast into fiery hell. So once again, fiery. Uh, Matthew, yeah, that was 18, 9, 23, Matthew 23, verse 15. This is a part of the woes. Woe to you scribes and Pharisees, hypocrites, because you travel around on sea and land to make one proselyte. And when he becomes one, you make him twice as much a son of hell, Genna, as yourself. Oh, oh, that's nice. Somebody tell Jesus that wasn't very nice. That's not what Christians do. Or is it? So, but let's remember the audience that doesn't. Okay, so that's, so remember the audience, like Jesus reserved all of the harshest things for the religious leaders. It would be much more likely directed, like to myself than to pagan Joe on the street. So context. Ashley? Yeah, that was a part in like Old Testament and intertestamental period, the Valley of Ben Henem.
Okay, that's what you were explaining all that.
That's right. Jeremiah 26, Isaiah 66, 24. You know, where the worm doesn't die, where the fires aren't quenched. Like that become, and they merged Jeremiah's, what Jeremiah says and what Isaiah says, into this idea where the Valley of Ben Henem like just becomes synonymous with this place of punishment and torment. Yep, and, and merge that with a reality that anybody in Jerusalem could see and when the winds right, smell. And so, so that's the real, I mean, you know, whether it's burning kids on an altar, child sacrifice, or it's any of the other despicable things, or by the intertestamental period, the place was so just kind of tarnished that they would take the enemy Greek or Syrian Greek soldiers and burn them out there. So so that place, over the course of, you know, 700 years, just becomes a not good place. So by Jesus's time, there's already a concept, and so when he is speaking of this, everybody knows what he's talking about. And so when he's talking about fire, when he's talking about, you know, this like torment, like it, it's already in people's minds. So it's not new information. Uh, you can look it up on, uh, you know, Google Earth and, you know, check out the Valley of Ben Henem. Or actually by the name that I had said before with the Wadi. You can see that. Or just look up Jerusalem and go to the Western Valley.
Did you go there?
Uh, we, we looked over it, yeah. So. And I mean, you can, you can see quite a bit from, you know, as you're driving around. So. City is overflowed and is in that valley and, I mean, it's all over. So. Well, but you know, it didn't, a lot of things have changed in the last 2,000 years. So.
But still knowing that history.
Hey, where do you live? Genna Street or, you know, like, 666 Genna Street. That would be bad, right? I mean, just, there's so many, I mean, just what we're reading about fire and torment and things like that. I mean, that's just, it, it comes with the, the understanding association that like all of a sudden hell or, you know, Genna, or the lake of fire is a place that God wouldn't go. Or that God didn't make it and didn't have anything to do with it. Like, it's his territory too. So, you know, but that's what, you know, meant by like presence. What does his presence mean? So. And that's why, I mean, I also, we'll stop there. Yeah. So, yeah, that's right. Yeah, so that's so many thoughts, guys. All right, so 23, Matthew 23. Scribes and Pharisees, hypocrites, twice the son of hell as yourselves. So Matthew 23, verse 33. Once again, Jesus is being nice. You serpents, you brood of vipers, how will you escape the sentence of hell? Man. You know, nobody writes Bible studies on like, hey, how to avoid the sins of the Pharisees.
There you go.
Because, I mean, some heavy warnings. Eight weeks, one, one week devoted to each woe. Just kidding. It's a bestseller. I've often joked about how like my humor would just play in, you know, I just have a whole series of off the wall or like, oh, that's not very pleasant. It's there. It's in scripture. You know, it's the ones that don't make it into the regular devotionals. All right, Mark 9. Verse 43. Which is kind of a reiteration of some of what we just read in Matthew. If your hand causes you to stumble, cut it off. It is better for you to enter life crippled than having your two hands to go into hell into the unquenchable fire. Where their worm does not die and the fire is not quenched. You might see that in brackets in your Bible. If your foot causes you to stumble, cut it off. It is better for you to enter life lame than having your two feet to be cast into hell. Where their worm does not die and the fire is not quenched. Both of those quoting from Isaiah, somebody felt like being a little poetic there. It's bracketed because the earliest manuscripts do not have that. It was included later on. Like I said, somebody thought that they could be poetic. So if your eye causes you to stumble, throw it out. It is better for you to enter the kingdom of God with one eye than having two eyes to be cast into hell. Where their worm does not die and the fire is not quenched. That one is not bracketed. That one is. That one is not bracketed. That one is in the earliest manuscripts. Alright, Luke, chapter 12. Oh, just realized what time it was. Okay, I have, I have two more. Bear with me, please. 12:5. "But I will warn you whom to fear. Fear the one, after he is killed, has authority to cast into hell." "Yes, I tell you, fear him." And then James... Uh, 12:3? Oh, I'm sorry, 12:5, 12:5. I'm sorry, 12:5. "But I will warn you whom to fear. Fear the one who, after he is killed, has authority to cast into hell. Yes, I tell you, fear him."
Mark 12:5?
Uh, Luke. Luke 12:5. And then we have James, chapter 3. Oh, you know what, I got that here. "And the tongue is a fire, a word of iniquity. The tongue is so said amongst our members that it defiles the whole body and sets on fire the course of nature, and it is set on fire by hell." James didn't mince words either. Alright, so we will end there tonight. Uh, thanks for bearing with me. Uh, the only thing we really didn't get to was the lake of fire. So, there's only a handful of those, uh, references. Uh, but I will tell you, uh, that, and, oh, and then we also didn't get to read from 2 Peter about Tartarus. So we will just start with that next time. It should only be another five or 10-minute discussion on hell. We'll try to keep it to like, five or 10 minutes. There's just a couple verses, a little bit of an explanation, and then we'll move on to the next topic, and then back to Revelation 14, the rest of it. Thank you for being a part of this tonight and bearing with me, and talking about all kinds of things that hopefully we will never see. Alright. Have a great week. And with that, God bless.